Good evening. We'll call the June 19 Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order. It is now 6:45 and if you'll join me, I think, with a do allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if we can have a roll call please. Yes, trustee Bowser?
Here.
Trustee Patton?
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Here.
Secretary Slager?
Here.
Vice President Schottner?
Here.
President Reed?
Here.
Thank you, and we've established a full forum for tonight's meeting. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion with a correction for as presented except for the work session. We don't have a work session.
Move all items that are in the left part of the session.
Yes. A discussion. Having none, Vice President Schottner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
The agenda is adopted, and it brings us to gratitudes. Open up the floor.
I just want to say I'm thankful for the school staff that really works around the calendar year during during the school year where we have students. They're in the building, working with the kids, and when they're out, they're wrapping things up and then preparing immediately for next year. And I know the staff goes down, but we still have summer school going on, and there's still prep going on. And it's certainly a labor love. I know, I know, you know, our, our team does it because they have a passion for kids, and it's exciting to be able to have those conversations and have them share that with us. I'm just, again, I'm thankful for our staff and our teachers that give so much to our community and purchase.
To piggyback on that, this afternoon, we had a group of, what, 12 high school English teachers right here, working diligently. We've got summer school staff on board. No school parking lot was busy during the, during the good morning, and the high school is really active with all students who are coming in to lift for the summer conditioning program. So it's just a neat, it's a wide variety of things going on. Never a dull moment.
Not really a summer break.
No.
It's just summer.
I'll keep it rolling with that. Seeing the sign out there, "Meet up, meet up," if I got that right. Hopefully, I think it goes. You know, just the preparation for that, some of the staff that works to care of the child. Talk about that whole child, making sure that their needs are met, that physical needs are real. Giving them the food that they, yeah, need to keep going. Great for work.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Support. Vice President Schottner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, the consent items are approved as presented, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to open meeting at section 8A Personnel Evaluation.
So move.
Support.
A discussion. Having none, Vice President Schottner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
We will enter into full session and return at a point yet to be determined. Okay. If the minutes get short and Mrs. Gussel will only back in the open session at 7:48, which is great. And we'll proceed with our inspection items. First up, we have the Summer 2023 Caving Projects.
So that collection of artifacts are the same information that you saw last week? And if there, this is just an opportunity for you to ask any clarifying questions regarding either projects, the scope, or finances.
We didn't move to city? Okay. More down my stream.
They can do more from here than they can from here. So.
So move forward. No questions?
Just a quick comment on that. Again, I said the last, fly that big department with the city, yeah. Getting used to all aspects of it. Teamming up with that. That's great.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Great. Okay, discussion item B, Early Childhood Playground Equipment Proposal.
Yeah, the same collection of artifacts that you had an opportunity to reflect on, review last week. So I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have. We've got a specific set of equipment, or the choices, or pricing.
I think we had a question asked last week. It was about teacher involved.
Yes, yeah, and we had the ECSE teachers were involved in that work. And we also included input from preschool teachers as well as the GSRT teachers. And then Cassandra Chartier, who's our preschool and early childhood director. Yes.
Great. We're going to run for action tonight. Discussion item C, Internet Security Filter Proposal.
So last week, Colin Gabriel and Austin Littbach shared the view, the outcome of a couple of test runs that we did over the past year comparing a couple of different security filter systems. And their recommendation was to move forward with a contract with GoGuardian for the 2023-2024 school year. It actually is a little bit less expensive when compared to the other system. But overall, the user experience was more beneficial to the work that we were doing with GoGuardian in comparison to the other product. So that's the working position.
Well, I, I, I know, and I asked for questions last week too. I was curious, though, if it also filtered for things like human trafficking or sex extortion, things of those nature. It sounded like it would. I just wanted to ask specifically.
Yeah, it picks up keywords. So I can speak firsthand. I oversaw the system over spring break. We didn't have any hits over spring break, but I was still on the tracking system in the weeks after spring break, and I was getting regular emails, multiple emails throughout the day, and they just do keyword searches. It's, it was fascinating the way it picked up on just the various words that are associated with some of those harmful behaviors or harmful activities. And so that it's triggered based on the words that are used. So yeah, it would pick it up. Maybe not specific to human trafficking, but there would be enough other keywords that were identified as, you know, obviously, human trafficking was listed, that would trigger automatically, but sometimes it's those, those subwords.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just kind of how I had two of the GoGuardian reps were in Michigan last week, and they stopped at our office, met with myself and Colin and Austin, and they were just very receptive to feedback from Colin and Austin. That might be something we could mention to them, and they might be able to incorporate that into the program. I did ask the question last week, if we can input things and make it work in that sense. And kind of think Colin said, yes, it could. That's how they grow, it's like we're saying. So I think that's part of what you're saying is, as we find those pieces, we just have to keep them in safe.
I have a question about that. And maybe they, this was discussed last week. If our high schoolers, for instance, are reading a book online, you got it from the library. If it's an online book, does that look through the words in the book? Is that going to trigger something if the words on the pages of the book? Or is that just for what they search for? It would, it just depends on if they pull it up as a, as a reference. So for example, I had the opportunity to observe, let's say, a student was doing research on some topic that was a concern. And if, if they pull up a Wikipedia site, let's say it was on arms or firearms or something like that, it would trigger on the Wikipedia site, and then I would see that, that page that was referenced. And then, you know, then it would be up to the counselor or the principal to verify that, yes, the student is doing a research project on hunter safety, and that's, that's why the reference to guns was, was actually being made, which is a legitimate, it's a legitimate project for a class. And so it, it does not necessarily, you know, make those decisions ahead of time. It just triggers the work. So it's a little bit like a CPS call. You know, we don't, we're not in the, we're not, it's not for an educator to determine whether or not a student is in unsafe situation at home. It's our job to report that there are concerning things that we are seeing, and then it's on the CPS order to actually do the investigation. So GoGuardian just acknowledges, hey, these, this collection of words was in this text, this body of text that the student was, was reviewing online. So, but does it read like, if it was a PDF, for instance, does that read the PDF, the PDF? It would be scanning, it would scan those words.
Scan for the word, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's crazy.
I would assume that's a text PDF versus an image.
Right, why, just think, yeah.
Picture, yeah, that's a limit to.
It wouldn't be able to scan the image, but. So the photo of a, of a, of a, if it was a photo of text, it wouldn't be able to scan that? I don't think so, because it looks for key words. I mean, maybe their scanning technology is greater than. Well, I'm just curious. So.
It happened.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the process? It sounded like the principal or counselors are reviewing aircraft layout. And then if it is a questionable piece, are they contacting the teacher, are they contacting the student?
Could be either. They, it just depends on the situation. They want to be sensitive. If they know that a particular student is in a class that's doing a research project on World War II, and arms and ammunition are part of that research project. You know, if they can trace a likely or a reasonable explanation back, then, then that would be adequate. But they'll, they'll take whatever steps needed to just make sure that the student is safe.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion item D, the 2023-24 Handbook Revisions, all eight of them.
So as Matt shared last week, maybe he's kind of coming up with some common language between the elementary handbook and the middle level handbook. So I just copied the text from the middle level handbook around cell phone and dropped it into the elementary book. So I think that's.
It made it more consistent, so for sure.
Well, the notes from last week that we talked about were just less is more. Make it more simpler to help families and students better understand of that, of that policy advice.
Not a fraction to my whole suite again.
Going forward.
Correct.
All right. Question item E, 2022-23 Final Budget Resolution. Welcome, Maddie, to the podium.
All right, I only have four slides tonight, so I'll be a little bit quicker. To start, I'll cover anything that has changed. If I'm not presenting it, it is as presented last week. So for the 2022-23 General Fund final budgets, I've made no changes to that as presented. Going down to the 2023-24 general budget. We did kind of take some feedback from last week, and we did make the decision to add back four of those displaced positions to Cedar Trails to allow for some targeted intervention to hopefully move some data, catch some of those kids quicker, and hope they see some results with those kids faster, on a technical basis. So that changed primary driver for an increase of $420,000 to the general fund expenditures. That brings our projected deficit to $877,000 for the 2023-24 school year. As you'll know, our current projection for 23, for 22, 23 school year is adding about $784,000. So we're putting the money in the fund, in fund balance, and then we'll be spending it next year. Some minor adjustments to school administration, or adjustments to personnel costs, and then kind of a minor adjustment to athletics related to personnel costs as well. Any questions on the general fund? Going down to community service, final and original budgets, again, campus kids and preschool. For the 22-23 final budget, I did meet with Cassandra last week. She is projecting, we actually have increased summer enrollment starting the first week after school let out. So I did increase our projected revenues due to our increased summer enrollment. And she also did increase the daily rate effective the first week after school let out. So those two factors went into adjusting the projected revenues for 2022-23. Obviously, we have more kids, and we have greater staffing needs, so I did increase our staffing, projected staffing expenditures by $20,000 as well. And then there were some additional invoices and purchase card expenditures that were coming in that I factored in as well. For the 23-24 budget, I increased the revenue by $65,000. That is to factor in some increased DHS payments that we predict receiving as well as incorporating the increased summer enrollment projections. Again, higher enrollment equals greater staffing, so I increased the staffing expenses by about $49,000 as well. Questions on those two budgets? And then the final budget, student activities, final and original budgets. For the 22-23 school year, increased revenues by $2,500. Generally have some deposits that kind of trickle in at the end of the school year as each building is closing out the year. So that, that's really just a projection. Could be more, could be less, but I do know there are some out there. And then also, we had some invoices that were submitted to accounts payable as well as projected M and P car activity, increasing expenses by $19,000. And then for the 22, or 23-24 budget, increased the revenues by $10,000. We do have some summer fundraising going on right now that we might be carrying the cost this fiscal year, but we won't have the funds until next year. So I increased the revenues by approximately $10,000 to account for some of the summer fundraising activities. The expenses, I count the same, but depending on windows, invoices are due, and when the activity is placed, will really determine what fiscal year goes on. And so those were all the changes that I have made since the last Monday, while the other funds have remained, are remaining the same.
Keep going. Keep. I'm, I'm used to like, you know, another half hour. I'm sorry.
We didn't go over the last.
We just pressed.
No, just same comment as last, same comment we had last, though, I would say, very detailed, very transparent. Appreciate bringing that detail. Of course, made to see some friends, neighbors, well, what's going on at school, and where the dollars are going, it's, it's all out there. So again, appreciate transparency and the detail. Thank you.
I know it's a staffing piece, but it does relate to the budget. Those four positions, those will be like, those individuals, those teachers will be working with students, but that is their job, to provide those tier-two interventions that we talked about last week, starting in reading. But our hope is that we can incorporate reading and math interventions into that, into that collection of, of resources. We're going to start small and focus on early literacy as our primary area. But we just appreciate your consideration for adding that resource for staff to do the job that are professionally.
That sounds like it would be money well spent, for sure, so.
Yeah, I was pleased to see that adjustment and just feel like it makes total sense.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item G, the Superintendent Egon equation. And we've been over multiple, many data for several weeks now, and we're having conversations. So Scott, I'll let you go ahead and start with a little bit of overview, and then the board can chime in.
Yeah, so the additional artifacts that are found in this, in this core packet comparison to the other, we did include the other survey documents that we had collected in the fall that we'll be using as we move forward to develop areas of focus for our growth in 2.0. And so that way, it's a lot of text, a lot of information, but it does give you a sense of maybe some of the experiences that our students are having, the experiences that our parents are having, and then the experiences that our, that our staff are having. So, you know, that's really what we want to focus on. We want to make sure that people are having positive, robust experiences when they're on campus. If we're providing that, then things will, things will take, other things will take their own steps. So that's the biggest, that's the biggest piece of change in this body of our facts that we built.
I don't think that we need to address questions, but if we would like to share, and we'll start at the table and work this way, any insights that you might have? The discussion piece, and then we will have this on for action during the action, but now we are sharing. Sorry, I didn't worry about it.
So just our, our thoughts, so just, just like. Yeah, or yes, yeah.
Um, I just want to say that we truly appreciate the efforts that Scott, the administration, and that's how. Everybody, right, wants to be, but it does everything, right? Because you, you lead them, and it's a reflection of, of that that I appreciate. Appreciate all the information that you gave us, hundreds of pages of information. It's awesome. You know how truly dedicated you are to this district and the work of us. We are very, very grateful for that. So, thank you.
I'd like to say, I've been on the board a long time. I've worked under a lot, I've worked with.
With, there you go, that's a good word.
A lot of superintendents, and, and the culture, and what, what you are doing is very different and good. It's good. And I echo Matt saying that we appreciate that.
Same thing, Scott, I think you do a great job. I'll put a cigarette, I've, I've been a fan of yours, we've talked about some of the things that you do in school, but one of the things that a great leader does is they've got a great team. They've had a lot of turnover here, and you, you have been able to maintain a very high level within the team, and you've recruited some amazing people, you know, to help lead this work for our kids and for our community. You know, just amazing. In fact, you know, in the midst of all of this competition for, for great talent in all the public schools around, you continue to be able to attract and lead a highly effective, professional, skillful team. And that's crucial for us to continue to work this out. So nice job there.
And I would just say, you know, I think, I mean, I just echo again some of what's been shared, but just the, the amount of work that you put in even into the self-evaluation and allowing us to see so, so many documents at just the level of transparency and integrity with that. As we sift through that, I just appreciate so much, and your job really is very complex, and there are a lot of layers and a large team to work with. And to have someone who is competent in so many areas, I mean, is amazing, because, you know, it just, it really is a very difficult job with so many different cats and pieces to it. So thank you for that, and, and I've shared this with you, but I just want to say again, I just especially just appreciate your keeping us on track with the flight plan and just really working toward those district goals. And I just love how you say, you know, the, the best days are ahead of us, and you use that kind of verbiage because you are trying to move us forward. We know that we're never, we've never arrived, you know, and we know, we know there's better things ahead, and there's more work to be done if you create that vision. So I just appreciate the progress. And I'll echo what everybody said also, but I do appreciate the leadership, where you are the leader with everyone in front of you. And so you kind of push everybody to be their best, and so I do, anyway, I appreciate all of your work, and I just think that we're finishing moving forward. We're really in it.
So I notice you're hard for the kids, and I think that's what gets me the most. Nobody's perfect, you know, bizarre, but I can see that you do care for the kids, and your, your humbleness to talk to us about that, that really struck me. So thank you, Scott, for putting them first. And I think if we all work together, we definitely can do great things.
So I think you've been hearing all the praise right now, but it is real that you have some, some work. And I think that's worth mentioning and recognizing that, you know, you're not there yet. You, you definitely recognize that and appreciate that. We're moving towards that end goal of having growth and success in our business. I appreciate you recognizing that and working towards it.
Um, work ethic. We, there, there isn't anybody that, it's incredible what you're able to put together and do and coordinate from all of the different avenues, from fun to heavy cart for students, and they send so many cats. And you are the creator of the flight plan, and you're creating a system that, and you set this out in, that will withstand, yeah, in time that when any of us are here surfing or.
that will withstand time that when any of us are here serving or moving. So that they can pursue. We appreciate everything you're doing. But processes and everything you brought with your heart.
We'll revisit this further on the action. Okay, President Public Comment. This will be the time that anybody could address the board for three minutes. Any takers for public comments? Anybody else have thoughts? Going once, going twice? Public comment is now closed. That brings us to the action portion of our meeting. And first up for action, we have the early childhood playground equipment purchase in the amount of $32,283 of entertainment motion for as presented. So moved, support. Any discussion? Having none. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries. The summer 2023 paving projects in the amount of $175,663.18 of entertainment motion for as presented.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Just like to say, thank you for partnering with us. Three times. I think it's great that we were reaching out and trying to figure out creative ways to save the district budget. That's impressive. So thank you.
Okay, Justice Bowser?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the Internet Security Filter Proposal to Contract with GoGuardian in the amount of $29,924 of entertaining motion for as presented. So moved. Part. Any discussion? Having none. Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Action, item D, 2022-23 Final Budget Resolution of Entertaining Motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion or comments?
Yes. I'm sorry about the time LP stuff. I do really appreciate all of those things for us. And I think you've done an excellent job of presenting all of those. So. Hopefully you didn't take a punch. It's a lot of, a lot of slides. And it wasn't, so. But that is a huge part of what we do as a board. And we have to, we have to look at numbers. And we do an excellent job of throwing that to us. Okay.
All right. Justice Bowser?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Action, item E, 2023-24 Initial Budget Motion. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries. For our final action items for tonight, we have our superintendent evaluation. And I would entertain a motion.
I move to find the superintendent's department for the evaluation of the 22-23 school year. And to enter into the minutes, the evaluation is going to hold as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Okay, I will call the roll. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Patton?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries. And thank you for your work. All right, we don't have a work session. We corrected that earlier. Communication, woo, I'm having things.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, I think we've all, I think we've figured it out. So we have our upcoming meetings in a workbook. If you can't find a meeting, scroll down. I lost it. Last end was freaking out. I couldn't. It got out of order. And so that's what you do. There we go. So we will see everybody after the fourth inch of long. And happy travels. Thank you so much. So it is 8:19. You'll stand adjourned.